I call to order this meeting in the King George County Board of Supervisors. We'll open with an invocation from Mr. Collins and then a pledge allegiance with Mr. Miller.
Bow your heads and pray, dear Lord, why we are gathered here to do the business of the county and bring praise to you in all we do. We ask for your mercy and your grace, in the Lord's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you. In that case, I will open the floor for public comment. If you are here for public comment, please limit your comments to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing, and when you come up, please state your name and your address. Floor is open.
Good evening, Kim Clark, 16482 Fairfax Drive. I want to get up and recap on the opioid abatement funding for the county of King George. I wanted to reiterate and correct that the abatement, with Pyramid being in our community, we are eligible for more monies of those proceeds, that we do not have to share it with Pyramid. But my question here is, if I know it, I'm sure they know it. Can we deny them any of those resources? And would the county then be liable in any way by denying them of those resources? The other issue on the table is that I understand that they have bounced a few checks, which speaks to their financial health. I wonder at this venture or at this juncture, can we strongly advise that they reduce the facility size from 100 beds to 50 beds based on the fact that they can't meet this beginning entryway as far as paying for permits? Maybe they're not in the position to financially run a facility of 100 beds. Thank you and have a great one.
Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Did anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record? I'm going to give them the last chance. Does anyone else want to come forth, aside from a public hearing item, to provide comment? Okay, then I will close public comment, and we'll move on to reports from members of the board. Ms. Binder.
Yes, thank you very much. First off, thank you, Ms. Clark. We had a lovely conversation at the business appreciation dinner. I want to thank our staff, Nick Miner, his crew, for putting together a nice business appreciation dinner that we didn't get to spend much time at, but it was nice to see some faces a small time we were there, and what I hear, it was a good event. So, thank you very much to Nick and his staff. Next up, I would like to nominate someone to the Planning Commission. I'm very honored to do this, but it's been a while that there's been a lady on the Planning Commission, so I would like to nominate Ms. Denise Flatley to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
So, Ms. Binder made the motion. Could I get a second?
Sorry, I didn't realize that she was moving.
Okay, so motion probably second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I also want to bring up today, I got to attend, I got asked to serve on another committee at the State Capitol. It was about real property, community development, and best land use practices, and it was the first meeting. It was, it's a small group. The only other local officials is someone from the city of Danville and Newport News, and there was a lot of issues raised today, and it's just the beginning meeting, but it seems to be that buy right and land use with affordable housing is something also they're looking at, and I will give you more information as we proceed on, and right now it's just the preliminary, so it was a lot of talking, not a lot of doing, but we will have more meetings and I'll give updates about that when they occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder. Mr. Collins?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone out. Ms. Lackey, can you respond to Ms. Clark's information?
So, the opioid settlement funds, they are to be expended, however, the board sees fit within the criteria of the grant, so we are not required to expend any of those funds towards Pyramid.
Thank you. Also, I had an opportunity to observe the Mecklenburg data center. It's on a stretch of highway, it's very similar to our 301. So, there's not much stuff around it. There are some private properties that are budgeted, but as part I saw, was still in construction. That's, the other thing was, listening to the service authority, what was the, how much was the cost of the violations that they reported this meeting?
I don't believe there's any cost at this point. You have violations when you, you could have a situation that you have to report that to DEQ within a certain period of time, and I can get back and, you know, find out what that impact that is, but it's not, it's not something that they paid out any money for that, that's not.
Well, Embow is not going to pay anything, but was there any fines associated with those violations?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Could you find out and let me know, please?
I'm telling you, there is no fines associated with those violations.
All righty, thank you.
If I may, just to add on to Mr. Miller's comment, we are still in the process of negotiating a consent order whereby DEQ has expressed willingness to roll in what they consider minor violations up to whatever date we finalize hopefully that consent order. So, Mr. Miller is correct, it would not be anything additional, we're not expecting anything additional to what, you know, the current negotiated amount would be for prior violations for the previous couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Cupka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to everyone for joining us this evening. I want to start out by thanking Biz Clark for your comment, and I reiterate, I think Ms. Binder mentioned speaking with you, and I too spoke with you at the business appreciation dinner. It was nice to see you there. Friday, May 5th, attended the Budget Work Session. Thank you to staff for your work on the budget and for coming out on a Friday night. I know that's normally the start to your weekend, and we really appreciate your dedication to our community. On Saturday, May 6th, I attended the King George Department of Social Services Family Day and the King George VFW Sergeant Nicholas C. Mason Post 12202 Second Annual Post Birthday Celebration at Sealston Sports Complex. I want to thank both organizations and the Department of Parks and Recreation for hosting the event, which had easily over 1,000 attendees. Thursday, May 11th, as I mentioned, attended the Economic Development Authority Business Appreciation Dinner. Thank you to Belgrove Plantation for hosting the event, the Economic Development Authority, the Department of Economic Development and Tourism, and all of the sponsors for supporting the event. Congratulations to Back Porch Vineyard, the Small Business of the Year, and Impact King George was the nonprofit of the year. Then later that evening, with my colleagues, attended the Budget Work Session. On Friday, May 12th, I attended Scholarship Night at King George High School. Congratulations to all of the recipients who were recognized. Sunday, May 14th, attended the Commonwealth Governor's School Graduation Ceremony. Congratulations to all of the graduates of our Governor's School. I would note that next Monday is King George High School Class of 2023 graduation, and I just want to say congratulations to all of the graduates and wish them well on their future endeavors. I would point out that yesterday was Peace Officers Memorial Day. I want to thank all those in law enforcement who provide for the safety of our community. And next week, May 21st to 27th, is EMS Week, so I thank in advance all who provide emergency care to our community. And on a personal note, I want to thank Sheriff Giles for covering the earlier meeting for, we know him as Deputy Shriver, but my family knows him as Coach Shriver, so that we could attend a signing ceremony for my daughter. Thank you very, very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka. Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. Ms. Clark, thanks for your comments and your diligence on trying to do something that we can do, so. Like Ms. Cupka said, the 5th, attended the budget meeting, just again, thanks to staff and everything for that Friday evening. It's not fun to be here on a late Friday. The 11th was the, like we said before, the EDA Appreciation Dinner. Thanks to Mr. Miner and his staff, and beat me to it about the congratulations to the Gumps and Back Porch Vineyards, great, great place, and Gumps have done a wonderful job over there. And then also, I would like to nominate, I have a nomination for the Wetlands Board, so I would like to nominate Mr. Steve Collingdon to fulfill the Dogren Position for the King George Wetlands and to fill the remainder of a vacancy that was left by Mr. Howard Nelson. His term would be ending 9/30/25, and I did send you all an email, a quick bio on Mr. Collins' background.
Second.
Motion probably second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Just thank everyone for coming out. Ms. Clark, again, thank you for your comments, and again, for being involved and diligent in bringing that information to us and asking those questions. I think Ms. Lackey was able to address the question about the use of the funds, so you don't feel like she was? Okay, what I heard from Ms. Lackey, I'll just recap, was any funds that come in is, could be spent at the discretion of the board, and there is no requirement, nor would the Pyramid Healthcare have a right to step in and say they are due some amount of that. It would be the board's prerogative to make the decision of where those funds would be spent. I'm sorry, we'll have to circle back, I apologize. We'll connect up, so I apologize, but we'll figure it out. I apologize for misunderstanding, but we'll get it figured out. Other than that, so on Friday, May 5th, we did have a Budget Work Session, so I'd like to say thank you to staff who came out. Obviously, Friday's not an optimal night to have a Budget Work Session, but thank you to all who came out to support. Thursday, May 11th, we had commro. It was Captain Copeland's last commro with us. He will be having his change of command on June 1st. Thomas Hastings was there, and he did speak to the S2A meeting, the Strategies to Action that's going to be held tomorrow. Will be participating in that at Dogren. It's a discussion on challenges in the area of concern at and around NSF Dogren, so I'll be there for that, and he brought that up during the commro. Obviously, very pertinent to us, because, you know, as our neighbor, we both impact each other, and trying to limit those impacts is obviously important both sides. Also, on the 11th, we had the Business Appreciation Dinner. Thank you to the EDA and to the Economic Development Director, Mr. Nick Miner, for setting that up and just having a great event, and for all of our businesses that do support our community, so thank you to them and what you do for us. And then also, that evening, we had a Budget Work Session, and so, again, thank you to staff. I think we're near the end of developing our budget, so that's encouraging from our annual budget, but then we'll be starting our CIP process here soon, which I'm sure will be very fun. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Beal. I've had a number of emails with him. I just appreciate the responses. I will be reaching back out to citizens with the information you provide, so thank you as well for being responsive to those, Mr. Beal. And it's always glad, nice to have you out here. I know you're out here for the SSYP public hearing, so thank you for coming out for that. And that's all I had, so we will close for our board member reports, and we will move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion properly second, and is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to county official reports. Ms. Hart? Commissioner of the Revenue?
Good evening, Board, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Lackey. From the present revenue collected from July of 22, $1,500,040. So, the total revenue since day one, $3,887,402. The total packs of cigarettes sold in March of '23, $327,870.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Hart? Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Thank you.
I think we have Sheriff Giles to come up to provide information about the enforcement.
Before I do that, to Mr. Chair, your numbers between Farley Vale and La Grange is 24 crashes in one year.
Thank you, I appreciate it, 24.
Ms. Price and Deputy Simon's schedules could not coincide, so they have yet to do the inspection this month, but they still do plan on getting back together and working on that, so technically, I guess I really don't have a report, but we'll have one next month.
I understand. Is there anything else that you may have for the board?
No.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much for being here, Sheriff. Okay, Mr. Jones?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and colleagues. Here to render the April 2023 Treasuries Report. Beginning balance, $37,104,284.84. County received in revenue, $19,020,924.54. We dispersed $19,374,045.98, leaving an ending balance of $36,751,163.40. This total has been reconciled to the general ledger and has been closed by finance. And before I leave, I know there was some discussion about the position that I had requested, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for working with me to help come up with a creative solution, I think, benefit of the county, because I know you all have a tough job to do, the budget, but also be able to help our offices as well. Just wanted to say thanks.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Miller, would you make sure that those get entered into the minutes? Mr. Jones, thank you so much. All right, we have the county attorney's report.
Good evening. The first matter I have to report on is a, some requests that have come up through the Landfill Advisory Committee. Mr. Miller and I both attended last week's Landfill Advisory Committee meeting. The first being that a request is made to accept the resignation of Nathan Ackerman as the Dogren representative of the Landfill Advisory Committee. The second action requested by the Landfill Advisory Committee is, at the last meeting, you may recall that I asked the board to clarify the role of the board representative to the Landfill Advisory Committee. At the Landfill Advisory Committee, Waste Management, who is our partner, so to speak, with the Landfill Advisory Committee, because the Landfill Advisory Committee was formed to advise on the goings on of the landfill, Waste Management has objected to expanding the membership of the Landfill Advisory Committee from five to six members. The basis for their objection is that the host agreement provides that five citizens are to be appointed by the Board of Supervisors. So, the request from the Landfill Advisory Committee is for the Board of Supervisors to consider if it might be possible for Mr. Collins to be appointed in the role of one of the available district representative positions on the Landfill Advisory Committee. That's one solution to resolving the membership of, rather than an expanded committee of six, reducing it to five. Another option would be that the board representative position could possibly be non-voting, so if it would just be kind of like a liaison, you know, participating as a non-voting member of the Landfill Advisory Committee. And then one further option, should the board wish to consider it, is that the negotiation of the 21st Amendment to the host agreement is still ongoing, so if that's an additional term, the board would like for me to negotiate with Waste Management, that's an additional option. And then the third matter from the Landfill Advisory Committee is that they have not had a full complement of folks on that board for a while, and so their bylaws require to have all five members present in order to elect officers. So, after the January meeting, when it was unable to elect officers, they considered in March bylaw changes, and I think the main motivating factor to consider those bylaws changes was to reduce the number of members that needed to be present to a simple, to a simple majority of membership in order to elect officers. However, they made some additional amendments to their bylaws, which are included in your agenda packet, as well as a couple additional suggestions that I have included for consideration. The main reason why I'm bringing this forward to the Board of Supervisors is that in addition to making, you know, the changes to the voting requirements in order to elect officers, the Landfill Advisory Committee would like to change the reporting structure to, rather than reporting to the county administrator on an advisory basis, they would like to directly report to the Board of Supervisors. And there's kind of been a little bit of a catch-22 as well, because they attempted to make that change in March, but they also removed a provision of the bylaws that said the bylaws had to be approved by the county administrator. So, I don't want to speak for him, I don't think Mr. Miller has any objection to however the board sees fit to configure the Landfill Advisory Committee, but given, you know, how substantial those changes were, I did want to bring them to the board, and my substantive edits to the bylaws proposed by the Landfill Advisory Committee are to clarify that in addition to the five citizen members, there are two non-voting ex officio members, one an employee of Waste Management and one of the county. That just reflects what the host agreement provides, that they are additional members of the committee, and there was one typographical error that was pre-existing that I, I just changed, fixed the spelling of King George in one place. And then I'm also proposing that if they are to remove that changes to the bylaws have to be approved by the county administrator. They put that they would be effective upon approval of the Landfill Advisory Committee. I recommend that they have the approval of either myself, and then if they can't or don't like my opinion, that they could come to the Board of Supervisors, and that's just to avoid the possible recurrence of an issue between what the bylaws say and what the authorizations are from the Board of Supervisors. And those are the items concerning the Landfill Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the bylaws as presented. The Landfill Advisory Committee. During your packet.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion properly second, and is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Collins, does it resolve the issue about having a supervisor on there or not?
I was going to do that next.
Okay.
Ranger to appointment to his spot, I mean, to his, in his district.
Okay.
Problem.
Thank you.
But right now, as things stand with the bylaws, the group and organization is just...
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make another motion.
Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. Go ahead.
To remove Nathan Atkinson from the Landfill Advisory Committee.
Second.
I mean, he's already resigned, so in writing, I mean, does...
He did submit a resignation.
I think we had to weigh Ms. Lackey's.
So...
Have a motion to do that.
That's if they're delinquent, is my understanding, but if we actually have a letter of resignation, I think that would, would that suffice in order to say that the seat is now vacant and can be refilled at the leisure of the supervisor?
I think that would meet current practice, so to clarify, the request from the Landfill Advisory Committee was to take action on a member who hadn't participated in some time, and then in the interim, we received the resignation, so I think just the action of the clerk accepting that resignation is sufficient, so that there's now a vacancy in that position.
So, there's currently two vacancies?
Correct.
James Madison District and the Dogren District. Okay. So, I'm sorry, we did have a motion properly second, and so, or at least we need to, is there any discussion, or is there a desire to rescind?
Table the motion.
Table the motion. Okay. Is everyone amenable to table the motion? Okay. All right, lastly, Mr. Collins, I heard you said you would be willing to fill one of the positions. So, the obvious landfills in my district, the James Madison District, I have not been successful, it has been a couple months, in order finding someone who would be willing and able to serve in that capacity, so I guess I'll ask, it sounded like you were willing to step into that role and serve as the James Madison District Representative, is that an incorrect understanding? Okay, then I will make a motion to appoint Mr. Collins to the Landfill Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion properly second, do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Okay. Ms. Lackey, thank you.
Sure, I do have a second item. The item is just an update and a request for a direction if the board is prepared to give one this evening. You'll recall that November 15th, there was a letter of intent that was authorized with the Ralph Bunch Alumni Association, and the letter of intent provides that within one year, the parties are to negotiate a memorandum of understanding or another legal arrangement to further formalize the efforts, the ongoing efforts to revitalize and renovate the Ralph Bunch School. And so, I've circulated just internally to you all a proposed draft. I'm not asking for approval of the draft, but I did want to give you an opportunity for questions or comments before I circulated that draft potentially to the Alumni Association so that I can have some dialogue with them and hopefully bring it back to you all, but if there were any, any issues or concerns with the draft, I'd be happy to take those here at this meeting, or if you all prefer, you can contact me individually.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lackey. Appreciate it. All right. We'll move on to public hearings. The SSYP Six-Year Plan to Adopt the Virginia Department of Transportation FY 2024-2029 Secondary System Six-Year Improvement Plan. So, I believe we will have a presentation from Mr. Beal first.
Good evening. Good to be with you all this evening. David Beal, resident engineer for the Northern Neck Residency for the Virginia Department of Transportation. And this is a joint public hearing for the King George County Secondary Six-Year Plan with VDOT and King George County. At VDOT, we talk about primary routes and secondary routes, and I always like to remind folks which ones are which. The primary routes are all the routes numbered 600, or 599 and below. 600 and above are secondary routes, and this plan is for the secondary routes. It is a six-year plan, so it'll start in July of '23, fiscal year '24, and run through fiscal year '29. This is the cover sheet of the plan, it kind of outlines the funds, where they come from, and, and in what years they're expected. They come from tele fees and then a district, district grant for unpaid roads. They come from tele fees and then a district district grant for unpaved roads. And in fiscal year 24, we expect just under $220,000. And then estimates for the outer years are about 165. And just as a reminder, tele fees can be spent on most anything that you you want to use your funding on. But the district grant for unpaved roads has to be spent on existing state-maintained gravel roads, hard-surfacing those roads. So currently in the plan is Prim Road Route 625. That's the second half. We did the first half last year. And you can see there fiscal year 24, which is July 23, the funding becomes available, or all of the funding becomes available, that 535 number. So we anticipate starting that road late this summer. And that's the only road you have in the plan currently. The rest of the money is parked in the countywide engineering and survey. There's $419,000 there. And then. Go to the next slide. You have $450,000 in the unpaid roads fund. This is the presentation from our April meeting. I don't know if you have my updated slides in front of you, but I added the Dixon Lane and Bald Eagle Drive based on our discussions at the work session. That doesn't obligate you to prioritize those for funding. But I will tell you Dixon Lane, we estimated that at $111,000. And we put that ahead of Bald Eagle. So that funding became available or becomes available in fiscal year 25. And then the Bald Eagle, we estimated at 590, $590,000. And that funding would not become available until fiscal year 29 is when the last of that becomes available. That leaves just under $100,000 in the countywide engineering and survey and $70,000 in the unpaid roads. You're going to go to the next slide. So just a little bit about the unpaved roads. We call that the rural rustic program. It has to be an unpaved road that's already in the state system. So we're not taking in new roads into the system. They can't carry more than 1,500 vehicles a day, which none of yours do. It has to be identified as a priority line item in the secondary six-year plan, just like we did with Prim Road. It needs to be predominantly for local traffic. So if you're considering a rezoning or some other land use adjacent to one of the gravel roads, the rural rustic program may not be appropriate for that. And then the drainage improvements need to be minor improvements. We're not putting in storm sewer and doing all kinds of things, but we are replacing pipes and driveway pipes and make sure that the pipes are good before we resurface the road. The next slide is a list of all the roads that are eligible for rural rustics. You can see Prim Road has already been designated. And as I said earlier, last month, we talked about potentially doing Bald Eagle and Dixon Lane. And there was funding within the six years to complete both of those routes. The highlighted routes there are the ones that have higher than 50 vehicles per day. And until we exhaust that list, we'd like to focus on those. And that is everything on my presentation. I'm sorry, the the slides for Bald Eagle and Dixon Lane didn't make it up there. But if you have any questions for me before we open up public comment, I'd be happy to take them.
Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Beal?
I have a quick one. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question on Alden. Is the water doing okay in that one section that always causes problems?
Yeah, we continue to keep an eye on it. You know, a big storm's still going to overtop the road there. But we'll just have to continue to dress it up. Fix it afterwards.
I just wanted to make sure I know that is a challenge for cost. So just, I've been reached out still by residents of that road. So I just wanted to ask that question for him. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. I apologize for not reading the announcement first, but the King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised, receive public input regarding the proposed Virginia Department of Transportation Secondary Six-Year Plan FY 24 through 29. We have already been provided the staff report and I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before your comment. Upon completion of public public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. So if anyone is here, the floor is open for public comment.
Good evening. Gerald Lester, 15270 Dixon Lane. Again, I wanted to thank you for considering Dixon Lane to be part of the rural rustic roads program. I just wanted to highlight once again, for the record, a couple of reasons why Dixon Lane would be a good candidate. It services a total of five families. Very little chance of future development. The last home was built in 2006. It's a short, straight, wide, well-drained road. It ends in a dead end. The average speed is about 15 miles per hour. Very little prep work would be needed to prepare it for paving. And again, want to thank the board and VDOT for considering Dixon Lane. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? Mr. Downs, is anyone online?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone receive correspondence to be entered into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I believe each board member has a copy of it. It's on the back of the colored spreadsheet, the blue. So everyone is tracking, so each of you have been provided it. And I would just ask that staff enter into the record an email from Adam Simonoff to Jackie Fish and copied a number of copies on dated Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 11:07 a.m. regarding his written comments for today's public hearing on the VDOT six-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, I will ask Mr. Beal, I'll close the floor for public comment. I'm going to ask Mr. Beal to to come back up. I do have a question. So I don't know if anyone remembers, there was a woman here at the last meeting for the budget work session, Miss Patty Clearwater. She came and spoke about some challenges. She lives on Lambs Creek Road and or at least some unsafe conditions on Lambs Creek Road. It is not on the secondary six-year plan. But my understanding is that she did speak with Mr. Beal. And she was under the impression that it's something that could possibly be addressed as part of the SSYP plan. Is that an accurate understanding?
The secondary six-year plan is a vehicle that could address the issue she was concerned about.
Okay.
There likely is not enough money within the plan to address all the issues she was concerned about. So there would need to be additional funding from somewhere.
Understood. And so this is a paved road. And so the concern, and I think it's an issue that we have probably not on and a problem on a number of roads, actually. And on Millbank, the road I live on, we have a similar challenge. The roads are narrow. And so there's no real shoulder. And so it can create challenging driving conditions when you're passing people in particular. And so she was asking in particular about trying to widen roads. And so that's what the request had to deal with. Obviously, I think we we should be focused on the gravel roads and trying to work to surface those first would be my stance. But I at least want to bring forth her her comments so that they could be heard. And I apologize to her. It was captured by our Barracuda quarantine system. And I overlooked it. And so it was over a month ago. And so she had to resend me the email. And I just got it last night. So I'll reach out to her as well, though, to discuss that as well. Mr. Collins, did you have something further?
Yes, so the road she was speaking of was Lambs Creek Church Road. And the telephone poles are literally one foot from the roadway. And she, that was part of her concern. I guess that's not in your bellywake, to get those poles moved back. I mean, they're very unsafe.
Well, it would be if we if we took on a project, that would be part of it. And that's why it gets so expensive over time. And the road used to be much narrower. And we eventually paved out the shoulders to get as much width as we could. Then you have the ditch, but to move the ditch back, you have to move poles or other utilities. And then you're grading further. You may need additional right-of-way. So a little project becomes extremely expensive very quickly.
But nowhere else in the county roads are the telephones that poles that close to the roadway. So it is an extreme hazard. You don't have, if you go off the road on Lambs Creek Church, you're going to hit a telephone pole. Bottom line. So I own property down there, too. And it's, I know exactly what she's talking about. So I don't know what the solution is, but it's definitely, that's bad news.
I don't disagree. It is it is a challenge and obviously a concern. And as I said, it's not, while that has some unique challenges, I guess, I think it's a common, or not uncommon, situation on a number of the roads. And so that's something to consider down the road as the board continues to look at how to improve roads and and what to prioritize in the future. So, but it.
Is there a rule or a law or some guidance where a telephone pole has to be so far off the roadway?
There's certainly guidance, you know, based on our current standards. But we have a lot of roads that don't meet our current standards.
Could you drive down Lambs Creek and just take a look?
Sure.
See if you have any solutions. Are we still in the public hearing?
The actual public hearing portion for people to provide comment has been closed, so.
I just wanted to say to Mr. Beal, you all have been really, really good in this district about addressing problems even before we get to you. I was telling you earlier that you all addressed a problem that I didn't get an opportunity to. I mean, y'all taking care of problems left and right. So I want to thank you for that. It was quick, taking care of problems before anybody fusses about them. Thank you.
Thank you. You all are blessed with a very attentive and superintendent who's quick to take action, including coming to board meetings on his own time.
Awesome. Did anyone else have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, not a question, but a comment perhaps. If there were consensus of the board, we could direct staff. I'm I'm on the smart portal page and I just looked at every project our community has submitted since for fiscal year 2024, all the way back to 2017 when I was on staff. We we have never submitted one for Lambs Creek Church Road. So would there be consensus to direct staff to investigate possible projects for Lambs Creek Church Road to submit to smart scale for bigger transportation dollars?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cupka.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you. Mr. Beal, you weren't here before when I thanked, but I want to thank you personally for filling that pothole on Eden Drive because that is quite dangerous at night because you don't see it. And if you're trying to make that turn onto 301. So I do want to thank your staff and that for filling that in. And I'm sure there's a lot of residents that are happy about that, that use that road every day. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay. So obviously, we do have the public hearing. And so I will bring it back now for consideration of the board if there is a desire to adopt the proposal as presented or any changes.
I'll move adoption of the resolution to adopt the Virginia Department of Transportation fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2029 Secondary Systems Six-Year Improvement Plan as presented.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Beal, appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. If I may, I just had a couple of things I want to report.
Please.
I won't go through all the maintenance activity. Just a reminder, I think in April I told you everything was coming all at once. And now it's almost here. So the the plant mix is under construction. They don't start tonight. They said they were going to start last night, but it didn't look like they did. But it is supposed to rain tonight. So I expect that to start this week out here on Route 3. And then the Cape Seal, getting some questions about the Cape Seal. Several subdivisions were planned for Cape Seal. And that first layer goes down like service treatment. There's a lot of loose stone on top of that. The traffic kind of wears that away. And after a few weeks, they'll come back and do the slurry seal. They'll sweep up that loose stone and do the slurry seal on top of that. Makes for a nicer, smoother product than what they have right now. So they're kind of in that messy zone right now, but we're still coming back to clean that up. The surface treatment schedule has not started in King George yet, but that will be later this summer. We did have a pre-construction conference on the highway safety improvement project for the sign upgrades on 218. So there'll be curb warning signs and delineators going up on 218. Expect that to start later this summer. That has a November 27 completion date. We'll start Prim Road later this summer. The 206-218 Turn Lane is coming along. Their completion date is October 2nd, but it looks like they're a little further along. So expect that to wrap up soon. And then the scour repairs on the culvert at Pine Hill Creek on 301, that's the bottom between Route 3 and 205. That's going to be a southbound lane closure, right lane closed for up to six months while they repair that scour. And the Prim Road Bridge is under construction, so there's a detour on on that now. And then the beam end repair on Fletcher's Chapel is wrapping up. So there's a lot of construction going on in King George. But we're looking forward to getting all that completed. If you all don't have anything else for me.
Anyone else have any further questions for Mr. Beal? I think we're good, but thank you so much for coming out.
All right, thank you all.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations or reports. Mr. Minor, second industrial park.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to give a brief presentation on the second business park and the conceptual design. So just really quick, project recap, show you the conceptual drawing, next steps, and then we'll move on to questions if you have any. So the process for this has been identifying the second location to potentially recruit new business for industrial or light industrial projects. Have the concept developed with inputs from engineering department, fire and rescue and the board, and then also go after site control. So here's the concept that SDI has presented to me. It's 82 buildable acres on these two parcels or approximately 650,000 square foot of light industrial space that's constructable. The concept includes a potential fire station, water tower, and two manufacturing facilities totaling 435,000 square feet. Here's what it looks like zoomed in. Here's your fire station here on a six-acre parcel. It's a cul-de-sac that goes into another 36 acres, buildable pad site. And then here are the two concepts. This one down here is about 210 with your stormwater management. This one here is about 225. So again, this is just a quick conceptual layout, something we can market to potential prospects and to give the board, as well as the community, an idea of how this park could potentially be laid out. So next steps, work with the landowners for option negotiation and then conduct engineering studies to raise the tier level of the site or sites. Any questions?
Ms. Bender.
Yes, thank you very much. So we talked about this today at the state level, mostly about economic development and affordable housing. So one question I have is since would these, how high a tier would these pad sites that you hope to get? And are you going to pursue maybe some grant funding to bring the tier level up higher?
Absolutely. And to go after grant funding, you need to have the sites under control. And having them under control could be an option or the county outright purchases them. If you have the option, you can go after a larger pot of money that the state has set aside that you could either use for infrastructure improvements and/or the purchase of the land. So that's the the process we're trying to follow. It makes it a lot easier for the state. It makes it a lot easier for the prospect. It makes it a lot easier for the landowners if we have an option negotiated early.
Because they were talking about maybe opening up more grant opportunities for localities to be able to bring that infrastructure. Because one thing I did not know is there's only like two or three tier five sites in the state of Virginia.
That's right. That's absolutely right. And this site is perfect because it's less than a mile from our current utilities. After reviewing this site with engineering, they suggested a potential water tower to service the park as well as service any development that would be on that corridor in the future. So it's coming together nicely for us.
And thank you once again for carving out for a future fire station for Shiloh. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Minor. That was brief.
That's right.
All right, we'll move on to action items. So we have the intergovernment service agreement with Fort AP Hill presentation. Ms. Pitts.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, I'm here before you this evening uh, to discuss the proposed intergovernmental support agreement with Fort AP Hill. Um, with me is Ms., uh, Diane Smith from the fort. Mr. Broughton is also online, um, for any questions that you might have. As you know, at the March seventh, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting, staff was directed to continue exploring the possibility of entering into an I G S A. Staff negotiated the terms that are in the proposed agreement, which is included in your board packet, um, which limits the cooperative use of county contracts for architectural and engineering services, absent future amendment and provides for a ten percent administrative fee due to the county for approved task orders. The agreement will be tracked in finance, including creation of invoices and the revenue received. Revenue will be reflected in the general fund. With that, I would request that you authorize the county administrator to execute the I G S A with Fort AP Hill's Garrison Commander, subject to the terms set within the agreement and the county's general engineering contracts. Without, we're happy to take any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
I do real.
Ms. Binder.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Miller, did you ever find out why Caroline did not enter in any agreement with, uh, Fort AP Hill?
So in my conversations with both the county administrator and the county public utilities director, they indicated that they were not going to participate because the nature of their, um, of that agreement was more, I guess, burdensome on the county. Um, they were looking at possible building maintenance services, snow removal during snow events, and I think there was one other, and they just indicated that it wasn't going to work out for them financially. It's certainly not at the level that this, this agreement would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right.
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the I G S A with Fort AP Hill's Garrison Commander, subject to the terms set within the agreement and the county's general engineering contracts.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Have a good evening.
You as well. All right. Authorization for transfer from school nutrition fund balance. Ms. Davis.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board and all assembled. My name is Anita Davis. I am the School Nutrition Supervisor for King George County Schools. And I am here to request a transfer, uh, from the fund balance into the twenty-two, twenty-three, um, school budget for King George County School Nutrition. And, okay, so the whole thing is that I, um, so I have two, two million dollars plus that the state says I have to spend. And so I had to do a spreadsheet to the state on what items or what things I was going to invest the money in. Um, of course, they had a lot of stipulations on things that I could not do, like it could not say capital improvement. So what I have decided is Sealston right now is one of my pet peeves as far as needing updated equipment. Uh, during the pandemic, we were constantly dumping money because their equipment is just outdated. Uh, I couldn't even find parts for most of it, which is leaving me with some pieces of equipment that are not working. And so I'm having to, uh, requite, re- replace those items. So yes, I'm starting small because I know I got to spend two million dollars. But, uh, I also have to look at the fact that with salaries and everything else that needs to come out of this money, I can't go crazy. So what I have decided to do is start small with spending. Uh, they really want us to invest in the farm to school and to do a lot of things with that. So, uh, thirty thousand dollars I've set aside to invest in two of the schools, to the elementary schools garden clubs. So ten thousand each. Uh, the horticultural department for the high school, I have ten thousand set aside for that. And, um, and then I have money set aside to be purchasing from the farmer's market. Um, I am gradually going to be replacing equipment at Sealston Elementary School. Uh, and replacing some other things, just making sure I don't cross the line with it being capital improvement, which it kind of is.
Thank you. Do anyone have any questions for Ms. Davis? Sir Stonell.
Thanks for coming out. Um, the, uh, the garden clubs, did you say that you were, that was money to grow their own stuff there at the school?
Right. Uh, in the past during this, for summer school, I have been able to harvest a lot of Potomac Elementary Schools, um, lettuce and other things. And that has taken care of us for summer school. Thanks to Ms. Cupca because she really started that. But it is, uh, it has been awesome. The only drawback was that I had to go pick it in the morning, uh, before I took it to the schools. But, uh, I love farming, so it was no big deal.
And are there classes that are doing this as well? I mean, obviously I, I can see high school and, yeah, things like that. But are the students, uh, classes participating in that?
Yes, they have, each school has a club and those clubs have evolved so much as far as the students, each grade level will have a section in the garden that they have to maintain and grow whatever vegetable that the garden club leader has decided that class would grow. And at Potomac, they have like an outside classroom. So it is really a learning process and everything is set up there to work. And we just want to get, uh, King George Elementary to that same state. So right now I'm going around trying to find out if I can find a company that will supply a fence because King George Elementary is opened and because that field is used a lot, that area after school and on weekends, uh, I guess people do tend to go where their little garden is and tamper with it. So we want to try to seal that off so it is just for the school's use.
Um, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
So let me just ask a question. The funding source, is this your nutrition, school nutrition fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion. Thank you. Uh, so I move to transfer from the school nutrition fund balance, the line item revenue three dash two five five dash four one zero five zero three dash zero five zero three, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and zero cents to the following expenditures codes in the designated amounts. Four dash two five five dash six five one zero zero dash three zero 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 dash nine nine zero dash two two three in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and zero cents to code four dash two five five dash six five one zero zero dash five eight zero zero dash nine nine zero dash two 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 in the amount of ten thousand dollars and zero cents to expenditure code four dash two five five dash six five one zero zero dash five eight zero zero dash nine nine zero dash two two one in the amount of ten thousand dollars and zero cents. And to expenditure code four dash two five five dash six five one zero zero dash five eight zero zero dash nine nine zero dash three three four in the amount of ten thousand dollars and zero cents as requested.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
All right. County Administrator's report.
All right. So there's two items and then I have some more to provide you, but, um, let's see, where'd it go, Mr. Dines? Okay. I think we had another two items that were there and then disappeared. One had to do with appointment, uh, um, Chief Moody reappointment for Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council Board of Directors. So I need a, a motion for that if I could.
I'll move to reappoint Chief David Moody on the Rappahannock Emergency Medical Services Council Board of Directors as his term will expire in June, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
The, the next item is, uh, our communications engagement coordinator, Ms., um, Amy Southall was going to talk to you about the branding process. Um, I will say this, that, um, in conjunction with Ms. Fish, Ms. Southall is, um, you may notice the different colors in your book and how the, the layout looks, but, um, they're making changes already. So go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Um, I just have a quick memo that I provided before you all. Basically, the overview is, um, you might have already received a KG alert. Uh, we have a survey out right now for feedback from the public about what they might want to see from a logo for the county. Um, that will be ending at five P M. On Thursday. So if you would like to share that with your constituents, that would be great. Um, and then after that, we will be meeting, um, with that information with Civic Plus, who we've contracted to create that logo. They will then develop five different concept logos for us to choose from. Then staff will recommend two to develop fully. And then once those two are developed fully, we will send out another KG alert survey for our, um, residents to then vote for which one they prefer. And then I'll come to you with a formal report, a recommendation from what, um, we have heard from our constituents. And that's pretty much it. If you have any questions.
Ms. Southall, did anyone have any questions? So when you say, uh, comments about, um, what they want in the logo, is it, is it like from a verbiage point of view? Or are you expecting people to draw something and submit something?
High level, there's five questions in the survey, um, mostly what's your favorite place in the county? What is, does King George mean to you? Um, I also asked them, you know, to kind of, we want to redo another slogan as well. And so with that, we also asked, um, what they would tell someone who wanted to visit here, what they thought the county meant to them, um, how they could describe it in ten words or less. So that was to kind of gain some, some input on the slogan. And then we'll narrow that down within staff and have them vote on that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Do anyone else have any, Mr. Stonell?
Um, I just, thank you. Uh, just a few little things that I've seen so far. It looks really great. I think it really is updated, the, you know, what you all done. Um, I did look at the survey the other day and I was kind of wondering where it came from, but yes, now we know. Um, so thank you and keep up the good work and.
Yes, I wish I would have informed you earlier, but we're on a tight timeline with Civic Plus. They need the information by the end of this week. So that's why it came out before this meeting, but I appreciate your time. Um, happy to answer your questions whenever you guys think of anything after the meeting.
Ms. Binder, I think had something.
Yes, I just want to thank you a hundred percent for helping clean up the agenda and making it look brighter, especially for us up here. The public might have seen us a lot of times scrolling up and down is because our agendas weren't hyperlinked and, and it's hard to get to resolutions when, and that's why we'd scroll up and down. So I appreciate the cleaning up and the, the ease of use. So we're a little quicker, uh, to, to, uh, find information. And then, um, for someone who does need business cards, I've always asked for last year, a little more color, a little more pizzazz with it. And it's nice that it's a, it's a little different and, and I appreciate the updating of it. And I will definitely be talking to you about, I might actually delve into the social media world. Shocking, but I appreciate, you know, you, you bring a bright perspective. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'd love to get a shout out to Jackie because she's also been a big proponent for helping with the agenda. So. All right. That's all. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I would also point out that, um, Ms. Southall, um, is, is, since you gave us a, a budget, I know we still have a public hearing to do and, and get through the official part of it, but we are in the process of preparing a, um, more of a, uh, like a digital slash brochure that'll explain the budget, explain the, you know, what, what's in the budget and what, what, you know, what the situation is. Um, I know that that's something that's been lacking. And so we, you know, we're starting that process. Um, okay, a couple of other items that I have, just a to-do list, um, updates for the capital projects. Um, so I think that's on the next page. You can see, uh, Old Middle School and King George County, uh, courthouse, the current courthouse use study, studies to be complete in four months, um, which is May-June timeline. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Bell with, um, Mosley Architects, they are in the process of wrapping that project up. So we will, uh, look forward to getting something here in the next uh, couple of weeks. And then we'll obviously have that presented to you all, um, at the next, uh, at one of the meetings in June. Uh, and that's obviously going to be a future capital project, but it is something that, um, we are wrapping up. Ralph Bunch Roof Project, uh, the project is complete. Um, and, uh, we're working on project closeout. And so we'll be wrapping that up here. Uh, the fuel depot behind, uh, Company One, the engineering staff is working with the fire chief and preparing the bid documents for the installation of a fuel depot at Company One, and the design work is nearing completion. So that is something that will be vitally important for them. Resurfacing the tennis courts, um, most likely, uh, we're waiting on the, the schools to be done. And, uh, Mr. Clark has indicated that once they're done, then they'll be able to get in there and, and finish up that project. You recall that they had to put a temporary pause once the cold weather got going. So we're looking at June timeframe, June twenty-three, when the school's out, when they'll get back underway on that. If you haven't been to the new courthouse site, I would urge you to take a ride down there. Um, it is different and it is changing every day. Um, we're going to schedule for the June, I believe the June sixth meeting, we will have a project update from the, uh, from the builder. And we'll have, um, uh, I know, uh, Chief Lind with the, uh, EMA has done some drone work and I will get that and forward that to you all. Um, and it is, you know, it kind of does a timeline. And so a lot of good things happening. And, uh, you know, from our standpoint, what we know is that the construction is, is still on, on course for, uh, the project to be completed in, uh, April of next year. Uh, ARPA water grant, as you remember, the service authority got five million dollars. That is ongoing. Um, we are working through those projects. I gave an update at the, the service authority, uh, meeting. I'm happy to provide any, uh, answers to any questions that any of you have. Most of it has to do with upgrading of wells and doing interconnections so that, uh, there's reliability. Um, the wastewater grant, which is another ARPA grant that the state got us, um, that project is ongoing. Um, we are kind of in the process of just starting that. Uh, there was a, DEQ was kind of inundated with their, uh, administration of this grant. And so, um, it's not just us, it was everyone statewide. And so we are now, uh, going to start moving forward on that. Um, the decommissioning of the Dogren Sludge Pond, um, Dogren wastewater plant has a, uh, sludge pond that goes back, uh, probably thirty years or so. Um, that has been out of commission for several years and DEQ would like us to just get rid of it completely so it can't ever be used. And so we have a contractor in there working, uh, Johnston, uh, construction is in there working and, and, um, they're going forward on that. So that is an update to, to that note up there. Circle and Canterbury Well Systems Interconnections, that's part of an ARPA, the ARPA water grant. Um, and again, that's, uh, and so is the, um, Arnold's Corner Well Upgrades. Um, Perkins Corner Wastewater Plant Decommissioning, that's a major project, as you know. Um, the, uh, the, the goal is within about year and a half or two years that Perkins Corner will no longer accept waste. Um, accept waste, so we're working through that. The next project after that would be the decommissioning of the Oakland Park wastewater plant. These are small plants, but they are obviously, the plan is everything gets centralized with Hopyard, and that's been a long-going plan for the county. County Administration Building Lock System, so essentially, it is complete, the new locks are in place. I will tell you this, the door to the county administrators and the county administration offices, that's going to be switched out, so that part of it is not complete yet, but that one will be switched out, I believe, and, you know, so we're still working on that part of it. And that is it on the updates for the CIP projects. Reminder, the CIP meeting is scheduled for the 23rd, also your general operations budget wrap-up on the 23rd, 6:00 PM in the boardroom. I will tell you this, and I believe that it has been mailed to you via email, but you also have the physical copy of the CIP as it is, as those rankings provided by the Planning Commission are included in there. So this is what you'll see on the, you know, on the 23rd, and we'll have the department heads there to discuss their projects. Reminder again, the joint meeting of the Planning Commission with the Board of Supervisors on the 30th of May at 6:00 PM in this room. That is it.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Chair, can I make an inquiry, please? Mr. Miller, would you be able to reach out to Mr. Clark from Department of Parks and Recreation to see if he has worked out a date yet for the ribbon cutting ceremony for the pavilion, the new pavilion at Sedell Brooks Park, please? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, and it just was provided for you up there, here is employee anniversaries, if you're interested.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Mr. Miller, was there anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. In that case, I do believe we have a closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene closed session to discuss, one, proposed contractual change order pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice. Two, proposed local incentive package for major economic development project pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-87, I'm sorry, 3711A6 for discussion and consideration of investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public, initially the financial interest of the county would be affected in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice. And three, pursuing options for acquisition of real property in the route 301 quarter where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3, I invite the county administrator, county attorney, assistant county attorney, county engineer, principal engineer, and director of economic development, because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will be reasonably aided, the board in consideration of one or more of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-37112F.
Second.
We have a motion, probably second, and do we have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 The opposed chair votes aye, we are in closed session.
I move the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered during the can't say it's closed session, closed meeting.
Second.
We have a motion probably second and I will ask by rule call him, it's Bender.
Aye, or so certified, sorry.
Mr. Collins.
So certified.
It's Koepka.
So certified.
Mr. Stonehill.
So certified.
So certified, so we are back in open session. Believe we have a meeting next Tuesday is my understanding, 6pm here in the boardroom, is that correct, Mr. Miller? It's in boardroom. So is there any other business to bring before the county? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn until Tuesday.
Twenty third.
The twenty third, 6pm here in the boardroom.
Second.
Motion probably second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 The opposed chair votes aye, motion carries, we're adjourned.